I'd like to call to order the regular formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council, March 6, 2018. Roll call, please.
Bacheway. Cole.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Salee.
Yeah.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throg Morton.
Here. Item two. Well, before I do that, welcome to your city hall. It's great to see all of you. And I'd like to make a promise. You know, elected officials are great at making promises that they can't keep, but this one, I'm pretty confident about. Spring is coming.
Hmm.
It's coming. It'll be here. So keep hopeful about all that. All right, so item two, student leadership awards. We have one outstanding student from Alexander Elementary School, Jalen Graham. Would you come up, please? (applause) Hey, how you doing? Good to see you again. So, remember what we're gonna do? So, I'm gonna ask Jalen to read this.
Mayor, I don't think so.
No, just not.
Did the battery run out? Try again.
Try again. There we go.
All right. So you remember how we're gonna do this. I'm gonna ask you to read your statement, and then I'm gonna read this student award document here, okay? So, Alexander Elementary, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, good deal. Here you go. I'll read, I'll hold this.
Hello, my name is Jalen Graham, and I am a sixth grader at Alexander Elementary. When I found out my teachers nominated me for this award, I felt special. What makes me an outstanding leader is because I do my job when no one is looking. At home, I help my students with their homework and clean up after myself. At school, I take pride in my work and demonstrate leadership all throughout the day. I would like to thank all of the teachers that helped me get to this moment. Thank you.
All right. (laughter) I gotta tell ya, I wish I could do my hair like you do yours. If y'all can't see it, it is really spectacular. Of course, I don't have any hair, huh? All right. Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Alexander Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Jalen Graham as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, March 2018. Here you go. (applause) Well done. Keep up the great work. I know parents right down there are really proud, huh? Good deal. Well done. (applause) And Alexander Elementary a couple times before. It's really an outstanding school. Where's the principal? Right there? Yeah. We talked, actually, right? Thank you for giving me that tour. Yeah.
Your agreement.
All right. We can move on to item three, proclamations. And Joyce, right? Yeah. So I'm gonna read the proclamation, Joyce, and then you should feel free to say something, and then you'll have us do what you want us to do, right?
You're at it.
Okay. Come on up. All right, so I'm gonna read this proclamation, and it's directed to all of you and to the public. City of Iowa City proclamation, whereas Special Olympians have a strong desire to compete and win, and whereas Special Olympians know that bravery is measured in setting goals and attempting to reach them, and whereas Special Olympians recognize the joy, pride, and self-worth, humility and disappointment inherent in organized competition, and whereas Special Olympians appreciate the benefits that healthy competition and physical activity can bring, and whereas Special Olympians give the entire community a chance to gather and share in their spirit of accomplishment, now therefore I, James A. Throg Morton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 to be Special Olympics Month in the City of Iowa City, and urge all citizens to commend and support the activities of the Special Olympics.
(applause) Thank you. Sergeant Eunice Shriver created Special Olympics in 1968, and this is our 50th year. Iowa serves over 13,000 athletes in over 22 sports. And we are celebrating the Midwinter Tournament this weekend. Athletes are competing in basketball, basketball skills, cheerleading, and powerlifting. And this is our 30th anniversary of having the Midwinter Tournament here in Iowa City. We have two major fundraising events, so that once the athletes reach Iowa City, they have no more expenses. We pay for their overnight stay. We have a banquet at the Marriott on Friday night, and our day of competition is all day Saturday. Those venues, we've gotten large enough that we've had to, we go to City High, West High, The Field House, and this year, Profit Gym has invited us to have our powerlifting event at their venue in Correville. Our two major fundraising events are the Polar Plunge. Again, if you guys would like to join me, come on out to the reservoir. It's April 14th this year. Registration is at 11:00. We plunge at noon. If you'd like to come and be a spectator, come on out. We also, if you don't think that you can plunge, we have another category, and it's called Too Chicken to Plunge. Our second main fundraising event is, in conjunction with Iowa Football, we have a Swing with a Celebrity's Golf Tournament. And through those two major events, along with some law enforcement torch run events, we do raise enough money so that we can take care of all of our athletes that are here. And this year, our banquet is for 1,150 athletes coming to Iowa City. We really appreciate you once again making March Special Olympics Month. And here to accept the proclamation tonight is Lori Ruth, Sandy Slezak, Kristen Kniebel, and Sheri McKee. We have one more honor for you guys tonight, and Rakisha Harrington is going to introduce one of our athletes who is a global messenger and would like to talk to you.
All right. Sheri, you wanna come down? I am Rakisha Harrington. I am the program supervisor for our local delegation of Special Olympics here. And during the Midwinter Tournament, we will have athletes participating in both basketball skills and basketball team, as well as the cheer and dance teams. We have about 40 athletes that will be participating this go-around. Sheri, being our global messenger, will be able to deliver the opening speech during Midwinter Tournament banquet, and she would like to share that with you guys right now.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Sheri McKee. I am 43 years old and live in North Liberty, Iowa. My mom and my stepbrother Jeff are my greatest supports. Jeff is the one who introduced me to Special Olympics eight years ago. Growing up, I was in specialized classes. However, I did not get involved with Special Olympics until 2009. I moved to Iowa City. I am so excited about the Midwinter Tournament this weekend and competing with the Iowa City Cheer Team. When I first started participating in Special Olympics, I competed in track and field. I did the patathlon. Following an injury, I decided to try tennis. Tennis is one of my absolute favorite sports during the summer. I really look forward to going to the USTA events. I like Special Olympics. I am a part of the team. Hang out with my friends, and of course, win medals! In my eight years with Special Olympics, I have had a lot of fun. I have competed in tennis, basketball, track and field, relay, dance, and bocce. It's hard to pick just one thing that I like the most, however. I can say that Special Olympics gives me so much new opportunities. I get to try different sports, make new friends, travel to new places, and tell everyone who would listen about all of my fun experience. I look forward for more opportunities and helpful. One day, I'll be able to compete at the national level. With Special Olympics, the possibilities are limitless. I love Special Olympics!
Great job, Sheri.
Hey, guys, let's do the oath. Let me win!
Let me win.
And if I cannot win...
And if I cannot win.
Let me be brave in the attempt. What? Let me be brave in the... Let me be brave...
Let me be brave.
Into the attempt.
Into the attempt.
Thank you very much.
All right. Great job, Sheri. Thank you. Thanks to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to item four, which is consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended. And we're gonna pull item 4D2 for separate consideration, so could I have that motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Taylor, seconded by Salee. Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Morton.
Yes. So, let's see, there's something else I need to do here. I need to state these two items, additional items of correspondence? No, they're just part of the motion? Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, so we'll turn to item 4D2 revised. This concerns Riverfront Crossings Park Phase III. This is a resolution rejecting bids received on February 28, 2018, for the Riverfront Crossings Park Phase III project, and setting a new date for receipt of bids for the rebidding of Riverfront Crossings Park Phase III project, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion. Good evening, Julie.
Good evening. I wish I was here with better news. As you can see, the bids came in, the bids came in very high on this project, about $300,000, more than we had expected, and we only had one bidder. So we are concerned about that as well. So our plan is to turn around and go back out, rebid again with a couple changes. First of all, we will be bidding for only one of the two restroom shelters. So this is the one to the west of the parking circle, closer to where the event grounds will be. The reason we chose that one is it's also the hub of all the power for the park, so all of the power sources come through there, and it will feed events and different things that happen in the park. The other part is, we will give them, the contractors, a longer timeline. We had originally hoped to be done by mid-July. We're now looking at giving them through October to work on the project, hoping both of those changes will bring it back down in line with the budget.
Sure hope so.
I do, too.
Any questions for Julie? Okay, thank you, Julie. Hearing none. We have a motion on the four. Any discussion?
Just disappointed, but...
Yeah, right. Hearing no discussion. Roll call, please.
Mims.
Yes.
Salee.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Throg Morton.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item five, community comment. Anyone who would like to speak to us about any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda should please feel free to come up and speak now. Please don't take more than five minutes. State your name when you come up.
Good evening. My name is Judy Atkins, and I live at 539 Stewart Court over in the Bluffwood area. I actually came to speak to you about the deer management issue, and I am extremely heartened to know that you all seem to understand the plight and are on board with that. Tony Wilbiter, which is the gentleman in our neighborhood who started the petition last summer, which I believe you have a copy of now, as well as photos, and some other correspondence from hopefully some of the other residents, you should have that in hand. Tony would have been here tonight, but he had surgery, and so I got elected. Anyway, I'm not gonna take up very much time on this. I'm just going to put a fine point on it, reread the letter that I sent back in August to you, and I'll be brief about it. I would like to share my concerns with you regarding increased deer population as of late. I live on the east side and have witnessed over the years the rise and fall of the deer numbers since the years of the last harvest. Many years ago, our numbers were high enough to consider a humane harvesting of the deer on two separate occasions. These past few years have been ridiculous with not only individual mothers with their twins, but the roaming of very large herds during the daylight hours. Two separate neighbors counted 12 and 17 deer respectively in their yards at one time. Tony actually is the one that had 17 deer in his backyard one day last year. While I know there's some concern about what we plant, i.e. being the flowers, the hostas, et cetera, they are also found to eat and damage foundation plantings and also ruin trees. I am also sure there are accident reports which add to the property damage as well. A couple of months ago, a friend of mine coming into town in the morning on Rochester was hit broadside. He was coming in at 8:00 in the morning on Rochester, going what would have been west, and as he approached the intersection of St. Thomas Court, a deer came from his left side, kind of blindsiding him, and just struck the front of his truck and did a severe amount of damage. I wonder in a split second if that deer came at a different time, if the damage wouldn't have been possibly much, much worse. We were all actually able to see it, because the car following him that morning on Rochester as well coming into town had a dash cam and was videotaping him all the way up Rochester Avenue. So it was kind of a scary sight to see. I ask you to consider, after almost 20 years, that this problem again exists. I'm very grateful to know that you've already started counts, and you are fully aware, apparently, of the increase in the numbers of these animals. I also hope you will consider the end result, that harvesting these animals could result in additional meat being donated to an ever-burdened food bank. So, as a part-time employee of the crisis center, two birds, one stone. So I thank you. I realize that this is something that might not happen soon, but the fact that you are contemplating it and understand the issues that, you know, we kind of have, especially over on the east side area, I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else? I think the answer is Nick.
Good evening, council. Sorry, just let me get my sticker out. So I want to begin by apologizing for once again, you know, subjecting you to my...
Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Sorry, Nicholas Tyson. I live at 1240 Estor Court.
Thank you.
I always forget that, sorry. I want to apologize for my semi-regular bummers. I have another one for you this evening, so, sorry. Because, I don't want to address the issue of the budget tonight, even though that's one of the subjects for discussion. I've already, I guess, made myself heard on the issue of what I feel is the already extremely paltry sum of money that the city allocates to affordable housing, so I'm not gonna rehash that, even though I just did rehash it in brief. What I want to talk about is the issue of what that money is actually used for. Now, I have already submitted correspondence from the previous meeting about the need to actually be extremely focused in what that money is used for. So for example, in 2016, when city staff had made recommendations for what to do with this bucket of money that was then being created, over 50% of it was going to be just handed over to the Johnson County Housing Trust, which is not necessarily a bad thing in and of itself, but what's dismaying about this is the fact that the city is going to allocate money and then essentially hand over responsibility for it to someone else. Now, the trust fund is a good organization, but there is a real threat, given the fact that you already have a relatively small pot of money, that you're just going to dilute it across many different programs. Now, any one of those programs could probably use the entire sum of money. So the Affordable Housing Coalition has made the recommendation, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, since she's here, to actually use that money to finance a bond issue in order to do land banking, to seriously go after land banking. But the thing is, that is a focus thing that needs to be done. In other words, use all of the money for one purpose. Another possibility, and again, this is in the correspondence that I've previously submitted, would be to use the money to directly subsidize rents for those basically who are completely priced out of the market. But again, the point is that it has to be focused. If you give, say, 20% here, or 15% there, 5% here, 50% to frankly, an organization that city council doesn't actually have any control over, then there's a real problem there, because, as I've said every single time in the past, the crisis is extremely serious. Not just serious, not just very serious, it's extremely serious. So what little money that you're going to put into this, it needs to be very specifically directed towards at least one major project that will have a real substantial effect that you can point to, rather than just saying, hey, we contributed this amount of money, let's pat ourselves on the back. And so that's all I wanted to say this time. No more bummers. Have a pleasant evening, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Semph, and I'm here on behalf of the Iowa City Downtown District tonight. Nancy wasn't able to make it, so I'm filling in for her. First, I want to thank the mayor and city council for approving the Ped Mall project. That's a great project. That's gonna do a lot of good for our downtown, and so we want to thank you for that. In addition, as you're considering the budget tonight, we want to point out some things that we would like to see in future budgets. One thing in particular is two-way conversions of Market and Jefferson Street. The one ways right now make it somewhat difficult for people to get from one side of town down over to the north side. And so as you continue to look at the capital improvements projects, we hope that you would consider fast-tracking those two-way conversions to help make the north side a more welcoming and inclusive place for people to get to and from. And that's really the main thing that I'm here to talk to you about. So I just want to again thank you for the Ped Mall project, and in the future, we'll be having conversations with you one-on-one about this, but just keep this in mind as you're looking at your budgets in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Hi, Tracy.
Hi. Tracy Achenbach. I'm not sure where to say I live right now, but always an Iowa City resident. I'm waiting for Cohousing to open. But I'm also the executive director of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. I'm also on the board and treasurer of the Affordable Housing Coalition, and I was on the Riverfront Crossings Committee that Rockney mentioned. And I want to say, you know, he was very correct when he said that the committee that we were on, the group of us, for-profit developers and affordable housing folks like myself, worked very hard to come to a consensus on what we proposed as recommendations. So he was accurate in that what we brought to you is really, you know, sometimes we didn't always agree, but we in the end agreed with what we brought to council. So I, you know, I think that it's important to note that, that it was a give and take on all sides. I wanted to also mention tonight, as I said in the audience, listening to you talk about your annexation policy, I keep being struck by the fact that I have worked in affordable housing throughout Iowa and many communities and counties for almost 25 years now, and what you guys are doing is such a big deal. You, the time that you're giving, the time that you're allowing staff to work on these policies and create these ideas, and the amount of money that you're willing to put toward affordable housing, I just, I really, it struck me that I needed to stay for this public comment period just to say thank you, because it really is a big deal, and I really do appreciate it, and I know a lot of people in this community have to appreciate what you're doing, and I just, it's, it is a big deal, and I just wanted to thank you for that, so. And I'm gonna finish writing my name, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Tracy, and thanks for sticking around. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. We'll turn to item six, planning and zoning matters. Item 6A, rezoning first in Muscatine for come and go and hospice. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.5 acres of property located at 1010 South First Avenue from low-density single-family residential RS5 to community commercials CC2, 1022 South First Avenue from low-density single-family RS5 to commercial office CO1, and a portion of 1025 Wade Street from commercial office CO1 to community commercial CC2. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Bob.
Bob McClos, senior planner. I would like to let you know that we do now have a signed conditional zoning agreement for this rezoning. We also had some email conversations with the applicant, and they have indicated a willingness to add additional features to the First Avenue side of the building to add more interest, including extending the canopy in either clear-story windows on the upper part of the wall, or frosted windows on the lower part. This portion of the building has bathrooms in it, that's why they would be, they wouldn't be clear glass. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Bob, would you mind? Do you have the remote for the projector? It turned off. Is the remote up there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can see on our screens, but for the audience? Thank you.
Oh, good.
Sorry, I was trying to make sure, I was following the instructions on this clearly enough. Any questions for Bob? I'm glad to hear that the come and goes are willing to make those modifications. Would anybody else like to address this topic? If not, I will close the public hearing, but before I do that, I want to see if the council's inclined to support or to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zonings Commission's recommendation to approve the rezoning?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm seeing heads nodding yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. So I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
[inaudible]
So I want to begin by apologizing for once again, you know, subjecting you to my...
Please introduce yourself for the audience.
Sorry, Nicholas Tyson. I live at 1240 Estrocourt.
Thank you.
I always forget that, sorry. I want to apologize for my semi-regular bummer's. I have another one for you this evening, so, sorry. Because I don't want to address the issue of the budget tonight, even though that's one of the subjects for discussion. I've already, I guess, made myself heard on the issue of what I feel is the already extremely paltry sum of money that the city allocates to affordable housing, so I'm not going to rehash that, even though I just did rehash it in brief. What I want to talk about is the issue of what that money is actually used for. Now, I have already submitted correspondence from the previous meeting about the need to actually be extremely focused in what that money is used for. So, for example, in 2016, when city staff had made recommendations for what to do with this bucket of money that was then being created, over 50% of it was going to be just handed over to the Johnson County Housing Trust, which is not necessarily a bad thing in and of itself, but what's dismaying about this is the fact that the city is going to allocate money and then essentially hand over responsibility for it to someone else. Now, the trust fund is a good organization, but there is a real threat, given the fact that you already have a relatively small pot of money, that you're just going to dilute it across many different programs. Now, any one of those programs could probably use the entire sum of money. So, the Affordable Housing Coalition has made the recommendation, and Sarah can correct me if I'm wrong, since she's here, to actually use that money to finance a bond issue in order to do land banking, to seriously go after land banking. But the thing is, that is a focus thing that needs to be done. In other words, use all of the money for one purpose. Another possibility, and again, this is in the correspondence that I've previously submitted, would be to use the money to directly subsidize rents for those basically who are completely priced out of the market. But again, the point is that it has to be focused. If you give, say, 20% here, or 15% there, 5% here, 50% to frankly, an organization that city council doesn't actually have any control over, then there's a real problem there because, as I've said every single time in the past, the crisis is extremely serious. Not just serious, not just very serious, it's extremely serious. So, what little money that you're going to put into this, it needs to be very specifically directed towards at least one major project that will have a real substantial effect that you can point to, rather than just saying, "Hey, we contributed this amount of money, let's pat ourselves on the back." And so, that's all I wanted to say this time. No more bummer's, have a pleasant evening, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Good evening, Ryan.
My name is Ryan Semph, and I'm here on behalf of the Iowa City Downtown District tonight. Nancy wasn't able to make it, so I'm filling in for her. First, I want to thank the mayor and city council for approving the Ped Mall project. That's a great project, that's going to do a lot of good for our downtown, and so we want to thank you for that. In addition, as you're considering the budget tonight, we want to point out some things that we would like to see in future budgets. One thing in particular is two-way conversions of Market and Jefferson Street. The one ways right now make it somewhat difficult for people to get from one side of town down over to the north side. And so, as you continue to look at the capital improvements projects, we hope that you would consider fast-tracking those two-way conversions to help make the north side a more welcoming and inclusive place for people to get to and from. And that's really the main thing that I'm here to talk to you about. So, I just want to, again, thank you for the Ped Mall project, and in the future, we'll be having conversations with you one-on-one about this, but just keep this in mind as you're looking at your budgets in the future, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Hi, Tracy.
Tracy Achenbach, I'm not sure where to say I live right now, but always an Iowa City resident. I'm waiting for Cohousing to open. But I'm also the executive director of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. I'm also on the board and treasurer of the Affordable Housing Coalition, and I was on the Riverfront Crossings Committee that Rockne mentioned. And I want to say, you know, he was very correct when he said that the committee that we were on, the group of us, for-profit developers and affordable housing folks like myself, worked very hard to come to a consensus on what we proposed as recommendations. So, he was accurate in that what we brought to you was really, you know, sometimes we didn't always agree, but we, in the end, agreed with what we brought to council. So, I, you know, I think that it's important to note that, that it was a give and take on all sides. I wanted to also mention tonight, as I said in the audience, listening to you talk about your annexation policy, I keep being struck by the fact that I have worked in affordable housing throughout Iowa and many communities and counties for almost 25 years now, and what you guys are doing is such a big deal. The time that you're giving, the time that you're allowing staff to work on these policies and create these ideas, and the amount of money that you're willing to put toward affordable housing, I just, I really, it struck me that I needed to stay for this public comment period just to say thank you, because it really is a big deal, and I really do appreciate it, and I know a lot of people in this community have to appreciate what you're doing, and it is a big deal, and I just wanted to thank you for that, so. And I'm going to finish writing my name, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Tracy, and thanks for sticking around. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. We'll turn to item six, planning and zoning matters. Item 6A, rezoning first in Muscatine for Come and Go and Hospice. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately 0.5 acres of property located at 1010 South First Avenue, from low-density, single-family residential RS5 to community commercials CC2, 1022 South First Avenue, from low-density, single-family RS5 to commercial office CO1, and a portion of 1025 Wade Street from commercial office CO1 to community commercial CC2. I'll open the public hearing. Hi, Bob.
Bob McClos, senior planner. I would like to let you know that we do now have a signed conditional zoning agreement for this rezoning. We also had some email conversations with the applicant, and they have indicated a willingness to add additional features to the First Avenue side of the building to add more interest, including extending the canopy in either clear-story windows on the upper part of the wall, or frosted windows on the lower part. This portion of the building has bathrooms in it, that's why they wouldn't be clear glass. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Bob, would you mind, do you have the remote for the projector? It turned off, is the remote up there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. We can see on our screens, but for the audience? Thank you.
Oh, good. Sorry, I was trying to make sure, following the instructions on this clearly enough. Any questions for Bob? I'm glad to hear that the Come and Go's willing to make those modifications. Would anybody else like to address this topic? If not, I will close the public hearing, but before I do that, I want to see if the council's inclined to support or to vote in accordance with the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the rezoning?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm seeing heads nodding yes?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move first consideration.
Second. Move by MEMS, second by Thomas. Just for the public's knowledge, we had a lengthy discussion about this during our last meeting. We did not vote on anything, but we did discuss various aspects of the proposed development. So, I don't know that we want to plow over that material yet again.
Well, other than this concept of the windows, I mean, is that a firm commitment? Because to me, that's actually a very significant variable in terms of the translucent glass as well as the additional windows. Is that, looking like that's going to happen?
Yes, I was told by the staff person that they agreed to do that, they just did not have time to get the drawings updated. And also, this will need to go through our design review committee and board of adjustment.
Thanks, Bob.
I would just want to briefly comment on that, then, because I was sort of the most negative on this project, and I drive by this through every day, and I want to say to you guys that, on the one hand, I think this is clearly an improvement over where there's at now, and I think the fact, though, that you're willing to do the windows, at least for me, is enough to change my vote. You know, I think when I look at this particular corner, I would have liked to see something different, but I think the fact that you guys have really reached out, you've made the changes, I think it's significant for me, and I don't think it's insignificant that we'll have more of a permeable look to it, that we'll be able to look in and have that light, and I think the wall, just for that, is problematic. So, I do have concerns about the residential, the loss of the residential, but I will change my vote on the basis of the additional modifications that have been made.
While I don't disagree with you, Rockne, in fact, that I think it will look nicer with these additional changes that they're going to make, and I do appreciate that, I really think as a council, we have to be really careful that when we have a rezoning like this, and developers are meeting the design standards of the zone, which we've got specific design standards within Towncrest area, and they're meeting those design standards, and because we sit up here as an individual and happen to have a personal opinion, and Jim, I think you said it really well last time, that you weren't going to let your personal aesthetic judgment, or I don't know exactly the wording you use, you weren't going to let that influence your vote. And I think that's really important, that as we look at a particular design, and particularly in a part of town that has its own design standards, and developers have met those design standards, I find it really hard for us as individuals, as counselors, to sit up here because we personally don't like something, and vote against it when it meets design standards. So, while I do like the changes they've made, I think it's important that if it meets design standards, we support it.
But it's ultimately a political land use question, and I think looking at the aesthetics in an area is perfectly appropriate. If this was, I mean, a totally ugly design, which it is not, I think we should absolutely be able to take that into consideration. It's a political determination, and to project, I mean, that by definition involves personal preference, as far as I can tell, as opposed to the bare minimum. So, I think it's perfectly appropriate, and we should continue to do that, and I think as a result of that, we're going to get a better product that will develop this neighborhood.
We'll have to agree to disagree. Because I think if you've got design standards, and they meet the design standards, then it should be a go.
Well, Susan, I think also, along with the design, are the safety standards. I mean, moving the sidewalks away from the street was, that's absolute necessity for many years now, and the curb cuts having one versus two.
Much better.
I think it far outweighs, I drove by there not too long ago, and I thought of Rockne because it's a very large home that borders to the south of this, that's going to be removed. But they've made plans for that also with the planters and the trees, and so I think they've done a very good job of working with the standards that are there and moving ahead.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6B, rezoning Foster Road, vintage cooperatives. This is an ordinance rezoning approximately 53.20 acres of property from high-density, single-family residential RS12 to planned development overlay, high-density, single-family residential OPD RS12 zone for 50.11 acres, and commercial office CO1 zone for 3.18 acres, located south of I-80 between Dubuque Street and Prairie de Chene Road. This is second consideration, but the applicant has requested expedited action.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration and vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Move by MEMS, second by Taylor. Discussion. I think I'd like to say that we've received no opposition whatsoever to this, and that influences my judgment about whether or not to waive second consideration. So, I'm happy to do that. Tracy, did you want to talk to us about this? I had a feeling maybe you did.
I just wanted to clarify something I said at our last, at the first consideration. You had asked about a trail from Foster Road to Schimmick. In the North District Plan, it is a desired goal and a feature, but this development will not put that in. You know, it gets closer to that goal, but it's overland that's not part of this development or that the developer owns, so while it's a stated goal in the North District Plan, you won't see it actually being built to Schimmick with this subdivision or this redevelopment.
Tracy, I'm shocked. I expect everything to be perfectly true coming from, no, I'm only kidding. Yeah, I understand, thank you. But certainly, if we get to the point where someone else wants to develop the property just to the south, this will be part of it. Okay, any further discussion about the motion on the floor? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. I should ask formally, no, I don't have to do that?
Sorry.
Okay, never mind.
Move final consideration at this time?
Second.
Move by MEMS, second by Thomas. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item seven, amending the fiscal year 2018 operating budget. This is a resolution amending the fiscal year 2018 operating budget. I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, Mayor, it's our pleasure to present to you the operating budget, and I'm going to give you just a quick overview. As you recall, in January, we had a lengthy presentation, an overview of the budget, and then you heard from each of our department directors about their individual budgets. I'm just going to present a short summary of that for you tonight. As you know, the budget process is almost year-round. We kick it off in the summer with an August or September work session with council where you establish some of your early priorities.
We're amending the 2018 budget?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that part. We historically have lumped these two, the presentation and the two together, so I apologize for that. We do have the amendment first, and then the presentation of the operating budget. If you want to take the amendment first, we should do that. I don't plan to present on that, that's a pretty routine item.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Okay.
So, what we're doing, yeah, I wasn't clear enough either. So, what we're doing now is amending the fiscal year 2018 operating budget. We just opened the public hearing. I don't see anybody who wants to address this topic, so I'm going to close the public, oh, I'm sorry. Jeremy?
Will there be an opportunity to comment on the 2019 budget?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing on this.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Move by MEMS, second by Thomas. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item eight, fiscal year 2019 operating budget. This is a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2019 operating budget, the proposed three-year financial plan for fiscal year 2018 through fiscal year 2020, and the five-year capital improvement program, I'm sorry, capital improvement plan for the period 2018 through 2022, sorry. I'm going to open the public hearing. Okay, back to the future.
Try this again, my apologies for jumping the gun on that one. You have the budget calendar in front of you. It starts with a summer work session where you establish your priorities, and then from that point, staff takes several months to put together a recommended budget, which then you consider and deliberate on in January and February. The state requires certification of budgets by March 15th, which is why we have the adoption scheduled for tonight. As I mentioned in the presentation, the last six years has been an era of really robust growth for Iowa City. We've added about 6,500 residents per census estimates. That is top four, I'm sorry, the fifth highest in the state of Iowa, and the four that are ahead of us in terms of population added are all in the Des Moines metro area, so it gives you an idea of the growth we've had. Combining the growth of Corvill and North Liberty, that would just be 100 more residents estimated than we've grown here. Comparison to the last several decades, last couple of decades, you see in the 90s and 2000s, we added 2,485 and 5,642 residents respectively. So, in the first six years of this decade, we've already really outpaced what we've done in those last previous two decades. We start with our budget goals each session, and for the last several years, our top goal has really been to respond to the property tax reform changes while maintaining our service levels. We want to always try to make significant progress towards the goals that you established in your strategic plan priority, and then we always look to maintain an affordable tax and fee environment for our residents and businesses. I believe that this budget successfully addresses all three of those. We talked a lot about our future concerns, and this is a bit of a broken record for you to hear, but we continue to hear talk at the state level about removing or phasing out city backfill. There's a legislation that's been proposed recently that would take one-third of that backfill for the budget that we are discussing right now, fiscal year 19, and then move the second third in fiscal year 20, and have it all completely phased out in fiscal year 21. For us, that's a $1.5, $1.6 million hit there. You all know that because of the changes in the multi-residential taxing, that we continue to see a significant decline in our tax base, or erosion in our tax base there, and you see the other items that give us a little bit of cause for concern, certainly as a growing community. We think about having to continue to bolster our services to meet the growing population, and having our tax base erode at the same times makes that challenging. Bit of perspective on those two items that I mentioned, the commercial backfill, which is being discussed in Des Moines right now, is $1.6 million for us, and you see some of the equivalence right there. It is a significant hit to our operating budget. The multi-family residential is also about $1.6 million, and that grows every year. It's about $300,000, $400,000 per year that that grows, so right now, it's roughly equal to the backfill, but that's equivalent to our entire road resurfacing budget last year. So, again, these are major hits to our operating budget that we need to be able to navigate. Thankfully, we have been able to navigate them in the early property tax reform era, if you will, and that's primarily because of the extremely robust growth that we've had. So, the chart that you're looking at on the screen right there is, shows you the construction value that has occurred in each of those calendar years, and you can see how, over the last two years, the construction permit value has jumped significantly. This growth has helped us build our tax base, while at the same time, this reform is eroding it, so it's offset that, and it's even allowed us to grow a little bit. I won't go through all the narrative there, but the concern is that we're growing at a level that's not sustainable. We can't continue to average $300 million in new construction valuation per year, it's just simply not realistic. We provide you that 10-year trend line to look at what is probably a more realistic range that we're going to find ourselves in, and that's maybe the 100 to 150 range there. The property tax rate, this is something that certainly we're very proud of, been able to reduce our property tax rate for seven straight years, and the logical question that goes along with that is, with all these financial pressures that you're talking about, how can we reduce our property tax rate? And that takes us to our next slide, and it's because we're reducing it on our debt service levy. So, we're not reducing it on the tax levies that pay for operations, but as our tax base has grown, and our debt levels have shrunk, we don't have to extract as much money from the public to retire the debt. So, what you see here in the red is our outstanding debt, and you can see how we've reduced that debt over time. In FY '11, it was just over $80 million, and now we're in the FY '19 year, looking at $64 million, so we've actually reducing the amount of debt that we carry, while at the same time, our debt limit is growing. And if our debt limit is growing, is a sign that our tax base is growing too. So, that is what is pushing the property tax levy down. That's a different levy than the operations, so that's sometimes a confusing piece of the puzzle there. When we look at the impact of this budget to the average household, you can see that it is a, there's a small increase property tax-wise, because the rate is going down, you'll actually see fewer dollars towards the city's share of the property tax rate. We do have a 5% water fee increase, and we are accounting for some of the changes that we made mid-year to the waste and recycling fee as well, so that gives you a 0.6 increase, 0.6% increase, excuse me, to an average household, which I think is very reasonable. Some of the highlights, we do still have the emergency fund, and while we're not transferring new dollars to the emergency fund, we feel really good with the level that it's at, it's about $4.9 million right now. That will certainly help us, should we lose the backfill, be able to adjust over time to that. One of your financial goals is to have a strong reserve level, and we have achieved that, particularly in the general fund, where we're at the high end of our reserve level, our reserve target, which is 35%. Because of the significant growth that we've had, we've been able to tackle some of, or provide funding for some of our more challenging needs, and so a few of those are listed here. We have a public works facility that has been long sought after, and a new training tower for the fire department. We have the funds allocated for that, and we're working on designs for that as we speak. You know that we have $2.8 million in this budget for the Behavioral Access Center, that we are jointly working on with the county and the other municipalities, and then per your direction from your earlier deliberations on the budget, we have increased the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund to $750,000, and we will revisit that number after the legislative session, after we know what's going to happen with the backfill. You see some targeting, targeted improvements in service levels with the police and the Housing Inspection Division. Obviously, we're proud of the way that we were able to implement the Bike Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan in the capital budget as well, and especially this time of year when we struggle with potholes and road conditions. I do want to point out that this year's resurfacing budget is $25 works facility that has been long sought after, and a new training tower for the fire department. We have the funds allocated for that, and we're working on designs for that as we speak. You know that we have $2.8 million in this budget for the Behavioral Access Center that we are jointly working on with the county and the other municipalities. And then per your direction from your earlier deliberations on the budget, we have increased the contribution to the Affordable Housing Fund to $750,000, and we will revisit that number after the legislative session, after we know what's going to happen with the backfill. You see some targeting, targeted improvements in service levels with the police and the Housing Inspection Division. Obviously, we were proud of the way that we were able to implement the Bike Master Plan and the Parks Master Plan in the capital budget as well, and especially this time of year when we struggle with potholes and road conditions. I do want to point out that this year's resurfacing budget is 25% higher than the previous years, and we have been increasing that steadily over the last four or five years. So that's something the council has really provided a lot of additional funds for over the last several years, and as we project out our contributions to roads going forward, we look to continue to grow that. We know that that's a real need here in our community. I'm not going to go through all of the strategic plan initiatives. You've seen these in previous presentations, but I do want to point out that we have a number of funded initiatives that meet your strategic plan initiatives. We had to base it on your previous strategic plan, but as you know, there's a lot of similarities there. We do believe we have significant flexibility in the budget to, to shift to any modifications that you make in your strategic plan. So we can maybe slowly flip through these and allow for folks to skim it, but we won't read through it.
And Jeff, just for the public while we're going through this, this will be on the website so people can look at the PowerPoint.
Yes, good idea. My final thoughts here, we're really in a strong financial position now. We should be very proud of that position. I know it's one of your strategic plan goals to maintain that strong position. That is thanks to staff before us here at the table. That's thanks to councils that preceded this one. There's been a lot of work over the years to put us in this position, and we really benefit from that. Because of that, we've been able to tackle major projects in this community, major infrastructure projects like the Gateway Project, like First Avenue, like Washington Street or the Ped Mall, McColster Boulevard, all these projects that are, that are significant. A lot of communities would struggle to get one of those projects off the ground, and we're able to do a number of those because of our strong financial position. You see a number of the other goals that I think we can get closer to with this particular budget. So while we are in a strong position, we do have to always remain cautious because we are going to be in this era of property tax reform for another several years as that multifamily rollback continues to hit and its backfill continues to be targeted in Des Moines. Overall, I think we have a very strong budget. You had very healthy deliberations. We've made those adjustments, and we're recommending approval of the FY19 budget tonight.
All right, any questions for Jeff?
I guess when I say like, I'm very proud that we, you know, or I'm glad that we increased affordable housing to 750, but you just said like, we're going to revisit. I guess the vote was to increase it to 1 million if we still have the backfill. It's not something that we have to revisit it.
Yeah, you are correct. That was the direction. I don't think we talked about a scenario that's being proposed in Des Moines right now where the backfill would be partially removed. So ultimately, that's your call.
I don't know. I'm all right because I really want to make sure I'm clear on this. I said, you know, my understanding is, as Rockne proposes, if, you know, the backfill is still, you know, we receive the backfill, we will raise it to 1 million. If not, we're going to talk about this here. But automatically, it should be raised to 1 million if we still have the backfill.
That was my understanding, and I didn't hear anything different based upon what Jeff had said, that if we have the backfill at the current levels, we would make that commitment with the expectation that it was sort of a one-year increase.
I don't know, but when I see him say like, oh, so we could raise it to 750, but we will revisit it, you know, dislike revisit it, that's what is like, like concerning me because, you know, we don't have to revisit. If the backfill is, is in, automatically 1 million. That's my understanding.
I think that's where we were, right? I mean, if there's a lower of the backfill, we would have to revisit.
Yes.
Yeah, that's my understanding too, that we said we wanted to increase it to 1 million if the backfill remained, but there's a lot of uncertainty right now about whether it or part of it will go, whether it will remain or whether part of it will go away, all or part of it will go away. So there's that uncertainty, and I understand that's what Jeff meant by we'll revisit this once we know what's happening at the state level with regard to backfill payments.
That's what I understood too. And if it is lowered, then we would have to revisit.
But if not, automatically 1 million.
Yeah.
I don't understand that it was automatically. I think we still need to look at the effects, and if it is lowered, whether it is lowered.
No, we said, I said if not, if not.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying if not.
I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, I think the council did, or at least the majority of the council did agree to increase it to 1 million if the full backfill remains.
Yes.
We're on the same page.
Yeah.
I had no choice of words.
Just making sure, yeah.
All right, any, does anybody else want to address this topic, like maybe Jeremy? I don't know. All right, Jeremy?
Hi, my name is Jeremy Ensley. I'm here on behalf of the Community Transportation Committee. So I just have a statement. I'll try to be brief. So public transportation is a vital resource that allows households to maintain employment and housing, access public service and healthcare, and connect with food resources. In 2015, the Community Transportation Committee volunteers conducted a survey of residents accessing public service, services in Iowa City, Corvillo, and North Liberty in order to learn more about their experience using public transit to get to work. Our survey found that over a third of respondents either lost a job or gave up looking for a job that they wanted due to problems with transportation. The biggest problems reported were a lack of late-night services, bus frequency, difficulties commuting between cities, and lack of Sunday service. As many business managers in food service, hospitality, and other industries will tell you, limited bus service hampers workforce retention and therefore economic growth. Where bus services are not available either due to timing or location, and walking is not an option, workers are faced with paying more for expensive transportation options to maintain their employment. So Iowa City's budget proposes funding a transportation study with the potential to help workers and all city residents gain access to transportation services that meet their needs. So as the study unfolds, we ask that the council consider a wider range of transportation options and programs, including other transportation models, to meet our transfer, our city's transit needs, thus improving workforce retention and growing our local economy while also staying realistically in the budget.
Thanks, Jeremy. Anyone else? All right, I don't see anyone else. I will close the public hearing. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
This is, I'm sorry, this would be a motion to approve a resolution adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by MEMS.
Second.
Seconded by Salee. Discussion?
Well, I'm just glad to see that in spite of, I shouldn't say in spite of, that we've been able to increase various aspects of the budget that I think really benefit members of our community and some of the most vulnerable members of our community, and at the same time, continue to decrease our tax levy, which also benefits everybody. I mean, that affects rents. A lot of people don't think so, but when taxes go up, that's, that affects the rents for people, and just makes this, I think, a more livable and more attractive community for people to live in, for businesses to come to. And considering where our tax levy is versus the communities around us, I think that's really important, that we continue to try and reduce that while at the same time providing these services and providing the support to those in the community that are more vulnerable. So I think, I think we've got a good budget. I think we, I think it addresses a lot of things that we're trying to do, making progress on the Bike Master Plan and the parks. We've talked so much about how, how they are such an attraction to this community for people who want to come here to live and work, or just to come vacation here. So this is what, seventh year in a row that we've decreased the tax levy? So glad to see it.
Yeah, I too am very supportive of the budget. You know, it's, it's a challenge, especially with the volatility that we face in terms of our revenue sources and expenses that we're responsible for. While at the same time, as Susan just mentioned, you know, we're pursuing a number of initiatives that began several years ago, and now we're moving in some cases into the implementation phase with our Bike Master Plan. We continue with our parks development. So on, you know, matters regarding equity as well as quality of life, I think we've done very well. One thing I'll just mention is that today, I believe, is the vote in Polk County for the local option sales tax. There are only two counties in the state of Iowa which do not have a local option sales tax. One of them is Polk, and the other is Johnson. So I'm personally very interested to see how that vote goes. I do think, you know, in terms of questions of road repair and so forth, and we've begun this conversation, you know, understanding in terms of how we budget to address our road conditions, how that plays out from a budget standpoint is something I think we'll be looking at in more detail. But I, I do think of the local option sales tax as being one option that could be considered to address both the volatility of our budget as well as some of these longstanding, you know, capital liability issues such as our roads. But in any event, I think, you know, this is a budget that is ambitious and has done a good job meeting its goals while at the same time maintaining that sense of keeping the basic operations running, you know, the lights on and so forth. Any further discussion?
Well, I'd just like to observe that our council went through a very lengthy process of reviewing and amending the very excellent draft budget that the staff gave us, and I'm really proud to observe that it contains so many good elements, ones recommended by the staff and a few that we added. And I think we have a really excellent budget, so I'd like to congratulate our excellent finance director and our city manager, Jeff, and everybody else involved in the process. And I know departments and others were involved in developing the draft budget in the first place, so kudos to them as well. And make, I guess, a couple other points. One is earlier tonight, when Ryan Semple speaking, he was talking about the two-way conversion of Market and Jefferson, right? So that's something to think about seriously, looking ahead. I know we've talked about it some in our own deliberations. And one last comment has to do with taxes and rents. Rents definitely go up when taxes go up. I wish it were true that rents would go down when taxes would go down, but as best I can tell, that doesn't happen. Well, so it goes. All right, we have a motion on the fore. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to comment how I also, the budget, it's, it's very impressive how it complements our strategic plan, all of the elements of our strategic plan. So kudos.
Yep.
And we're going to separately vote on the capital improvement, right? Because I was going to bring up the two-way issue in that context too.
No, it's, you're voting on both the operating.
Oh, we are now, for purposes of discussion.
No, this is.
Two separate resolutions.
This is just the annual.
One, one.
Two, two separate.
Resolutions, one public hearing.
Yeah. Okay, hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Now we're going to consider a resolution approving the three-year financial plan and the five-year capital improvement plan for the city of Iowa City, Iowa. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Salee, seconded by MEMS. Discussion?
I guess now I would like.
It's your shot.
I think it would be a discussion on the Jefferson Market. Obviously, we can't amend that tonight. It's my understanding that would be about a million-dollar project, but I would, as we sort of go through the course of this year, like to further explore that as an issue. I'm very pleased that the downtown district is supporting that. I do think that's going to be absolutely critical towards continuing to make the north side even more livable, the developments we've seen in North Market Square Park. We're not going to make that decision tonight, but I was very pleased with that. And so as we look out the next five years, as a council, we've all watched Jeff Speck, read his book. I think now is the time to seriously consider that moving forward.
Yeah. Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Salee?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
And MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Congratulations to our staff. Item nine, announcement of vacancies. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. So we have two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a six-year term on the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Appeals, one vacancy for a Jefferson Street representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission, and one vacancy to fill a four-year term on the Civil Service Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, March 13. I'd like to make a quick comment. Last, in our last meeting, did we not decide to defer consideration or re-advertise or something for the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment? I thought we had one, I'm sorry, the Airport Zoning Commission. We had one applicant for that position, but there was a gender requirement?
Correct. And we, kind of our new practice is to appoint at the second meeting of each month so that we're not constantly throwing in applications. So it will be on next time.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. All right, item 10. Ben, would you like to, this is community comment. We're revisiting it in case anybody wanted to speak to us again.
Hi, my name is Benjamin Nelson, University of Iowa Student Government City Liaison. My only announcement today is to just kind of let you all know, let the community know about the Hawkeye Completion Grant Initiative that the University of Iowa Student Government is pushing forward. What the Hawkeye Completion Grant is, it's a donation-focused drive to collect funds which would then be allocated based off a need-based application to University of Iowa juniors and seniors who need to pay some money off on their U-bills so that they can continue to register or that they can continue to graduate. It's a, it's a need-based initiative that's been spearheaded by Jacob Simpson and Lillian Sanchez, President and Vice President. It's through Gold Rush Online. I'll be sending you all an email later this evening. I would very much, we would appreciate it if you don't have the means to necessarily donate, or if anybody in the community doesn't have the means to necessarily donate, but to push it through your channels because, you know, as we talk about college affordability, tuition, housing, all the, all these factors, they're intertwined, and there are students who are, who are very vulnerable at this stage, so anything helps. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. All right, we can turn to item 11, City Council Information. Maz, why don't we start with you, and we'll move to your right, which means Rockne would be next.
I don't have much to report, you know. I couldn't go to the meeting for the Paris seat meeting because I have like death on the family. My mother-in-law, she passed away.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I had to be outside the country, and I came, I guess it's been one week outside, and twist my fate, I have like real hard time. Yeah, but on the weekend, I'm going to go to Washington DC to speak at the National Democratic Party over there, like as a guest.
The National Democratic what?
Yeah, committee.
Committee.
Oh. Congratulations.
NDC, yeah.
DNCC, is that what it is?
DNCC, yeah.
Congratulations. I look forward to hearing about it.
Sure.
Rock?
Can we talk about our service on the boards now as well during this timeframe?
Well, we're supposed to do that at the end of our work session.
I don't have anything else.
Yeah. John?
There were a couple of things. We, and many of us were at the Affordable Housing Coalition's mixer on the 27th. That was a very enjoyable event. And second, Jim and Kingsley and I toured Robert A. Lee on the 23rd of February, which was a very enlightening tour, I must say. I live so close, and yet I don't take advantage of it. And so I do plan to get a membership card. It's, you know, the, the work that has been done there has really improved the, the facility, has a lot to offer. So I'd encourage anyone who hasn't given, can. a lot to offer, so I'd encourage anyone who hasn't given consideration to the use of Robert A. Lee, give it a look. It's really a fine facility.
Not a lot, except I just got an update here. The US Justice Department has decided to sue the state of California over sanctuary laws that aid those in the US illegally. So there's an escalation from the federal government on these issues, which is not particularly surprising, but obviously, you know, of concern as we try to make sure that everybody in our community is safe, and that means that people who are here undocumented still can report crimes, you know, and feel that they are safe in our communities and have those resources available. So it's unfortunate to hear.
Yep. Pauline?
Several else. We're at the Crisis Center, had cake breakfast this past weekend, and it appeared to be a great success. When I got there around 10, the persons at the front table said they'd had about 750 people, and by noon, they reported over 1,000 people.
Huge.
So kudos to the Crisis Center, great event, and all the volunteers. It was, again, really fun to see the Hawkeye football players helping as their service projects. That was really nice. So the community really went all out for that. Their, Saturday, March 24th, and Sunday, March 25th is the Shelter House Book Sale, and that's 10:30 to 4:00 on Saturday and noon to 4:00 on the Sunday. And you can also donate books up until that time, dropping them off in Building B at the Johnson County Fairgrounds, Monday, Wednesday, Saturday, from 1:00 till 3:00. So that's also something that people can help out with. I'm excited. Tomorrow, I've been invited to go to Longfellow School to talk to my grandson's fifth and sixth grade classes, their career day, the students, which just gives me great hope for that generation. They wanted to hear somebody talk about a career in politics, and I think that's really fun and exciting, so I'm looking forward to that, see the Longfellow Longhorns tomorrow. And I think, I don't know if I should repeat, Susan and I have the listing post, which was in your IP packet, the report on that, so I won't dwell on that, but small turnout, but very real concerns that people expressed. So I'll be sure to read the summary on that. I think that's it.
Okay. Well, I'll mention a few things. Along with Jeff and many staff members, Rockne and I toured Procter &amp; Gamble's Oral Beef Facility in the old Menards Building on the 22nd. And I want to thank Mike McCleary at Oral Beef for facilitating that tour. It was really pretty darn enlightening for me, and I imagine the same is true for you, Rock.
Certainly.
Also, Kingsley and I participated in the City of Literature's One Book, Two Book Youth Awards Ceremony on the 25th. It's always a fun event. There were, I don't know, 100 kids that got awards. Tomorrow, the 7th, I will be attending the Optimist Club's Youth Writing Awards Event. And that night, tomorrow night, the 7th, I will make welcoming comments at the United Nations Association's Night of a Thousand Diners event. This is one of those many kinds of things that the mayor goes to. I'm looking forward to spring break. I don't know, you know, there you go, yeah. My wife teaches at the university, so spring break matters to us, and our daughter Zoe is a student there as well. And I think I want to say something about half-masting of the flag, so bear with me for a second. I've got to find my correct page here. I know we received or saw various complaints about the fact that city government lowered our flag in honor of Billy Graham, and I want to say that I understand and fully respect why some members of our community would object to honoring this particular individual. There, people have judgments about these kinds of things. However, a resolution that had been adopted by the city council back in October of 2009 specified five situations in which the flag should be lowered, including whenever lowering of a flag was decreed by the president or by the governor. And the resolution further stated that the lowering should be carried out by the city manager or designee. In this case, both the president and the governor decreed that flags should be lowered to half-mast, and our city manager did as is required by our policy. So I just want people to know that that's the fact of the situation. All right, that's enough for me. Jeff, did you want to say anything?
No.
Ashley?
I was just going to note that I have reservations for Counselor Thomas and Counselor Badgway for tours at the water plant. The probable tour is on the 23rd of March, the afternoon at 2:00. There's also a second date. We have the 16th of March, so it is spring break week, but if you have an opportunity and want to partake, just let me know.
Add me to the 23rd at 2:00.
The 23rd? Yeah.
You have two times.
So on the 16th?
You can add me to the 16th.
Would work for you? Okay, great.
Be gone next week.
Okay.
Trial on the 23rd.
2:00 PM. So we're just meeting at the water plant on Steve Atkins Drive. So I'll have the 3:00 on the 23rd, and then Counselor Sully on the 16th.
Can you have more on the 23rd, or?
I think we're eliminating.
Pauline, do you want to do the 23rd? I think I can do the 16th if that would work better so we don't have a forum.
Would that be all right?
Okay.
If you don't mind, Susan, that'd be great. Thank you.
Great. And that is all I have. I appreciated the participants at the other tour of Robert A. Lee, so.
Yeah, it was fun.
We're glad to do it.
All right, Sue? Kelly? All right, I think that means we're done, so we're going to adjourn. Could I have a motion to adjourn to the work session, please?
Move.
Second.
By SOA, seconded by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned to the work session.[1730.65]